Okay, I'll call the order, the April 1st, 2019 Regular Haywood County Board of Commissioners Meeting. And since this is the first meeting with our new Order of Business, I thought I would go over a few things. And we've all had a chance to review the agenda. And if you see something you think needs to be moved from the Consent Agenda or Appointments of the Regular Agenda for further discussion, you may address that during the discussion and the adjustments to the agenda items. And I will present each Consent Agenda item and then ask for a vote to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. And under the Appointments item on the agenda, Mr. Morehead will list the names and boards, committees requiring appointment. I will then call for a vote to approve the appointments to the boards, committees as presented. And this is what we approved last time during the, during our board meeting, which was a school of government recommendation that Tommy and Mark had seen when they attended that, that meeting. So, our first Order of Business will be to, for our Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, I'll call our, the Board of Commissioners Chaplain, Reverend Patrick Womack, to come forward and give our invocation. So if everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleasure) Pledge of Allegiance to God, in the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we pray. Our God and Father in heaven, we praise and bless your name as we gather here for this meeting. We pray that you will bless our commissioners. Again, we ask for wisdom and discernment, that they may be able to consider the matters that come before them with an ability to work through details, but also to remain clear in their vision of the bigger picture. Help us all, Father, to be good at governing and to be good stewards of the resources and all that you have given us. And especially, we pray for those who are struggling among us, whether it's a lack of resources or health issues, we pray that you will provide for them and loved ones that are concerned about them. Bless this county, we pray. We're grateful for the privilege of living here. We thank you for the beauty of it. We thank you for the beauty of our people. And we ask your blessing in every way, oh Lord, that your grace may be shed upon us, for we pray in your glorious name. Amen.
Okay, thank you Reverend Womack. Okay, our next item of business is the Public Hearings, or call the Public Hearings, and we have none today. So this will be our, our normal way to do business now. Okay, our next item of business is our Public Comment Session. And if anyone, I have no one has signed up. And if anyone would like to come forward, you can have three minutes. And it is timed, there's a, a yellow, you only have like 20 or 30 seconds, and then a red on the top of the podium, when that's on, your three minutes will be up. And we'd ask that you conclude your remarks. And then, when you do come forward, please state your name and maybe where you're from. And do we have anyone that would like to address the board at this time under Public Comment? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the Public Comment period, and we'll move to Constituent Concerns. And I'll start with Tommy. Do you have any this morning that you'd like to comment on?
No.
Okay. Brandon, do you?
No, I do not.
Kirk?
No.
Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, our next item of business is our Administrative Agency Reports and Presentations. And the first item of business there will be the introduction of new county employees. And we have our County Manager Bryant Morehead to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning, we have five new employees to introduce. I think the first is currently at work. Rosalia McCady with Health and Human Services. Courtney Tatum, Social Work Trainee at Health and Human Services. With the Sheriff's Office, we have Kevin Burris, Brandy Patterson, and Sean Cagle. Thank you.
Okay, well, welcome. And you may leave to go back to work if you need to. Okay. Okay, and then our next item will be the presentation of a Certificate of Appreciation from Chapter 89 of the North Carolina Disabled American Veterans. And we have Chapter 89 Adjutant Paul Taylor here to present that. So, Mr. Taylor, if you'd just come forward to the podium and present, that'll be great.
Thank you, sir. For the members who may not be aware of the Disabled American Veteran, Chapter 89, we cover Haywood, Jackson, and Swain Counties. We, our motto is Veterans Helping Veterans. Priority one is disabled veterans in need in the counties. Priority two is any veterans. And then, priority three is any veterans happen to be traveling through our counties that come up with a need. We go out, and the community has been very well supporting us financially, so we can do these things. One of the things we do every Christmas is we go to all the nursing homes in the three counties, sit down and talk to the veterans, the ones that were responsive, give them a Christmas card and $50 to put in their accounts. This last year, we did 131 veterans. We are currently also in the planning of helping the JROTCs. Pizzga at this timeframe has declined, as well as the Cherokee Indian Reservation, they said they're okay. The Swain County JRTC and Tuscula JRTC are in the process with us of making plans to do a fundraiser. If everything goes through, the Tuscula one will be May 10th and 11th. So, at this time, I'd like to present to you this Certificate of Appreciation, which reads, Certificate of Appreciation awarded to Haywood County Commissioners. This certificate is awarded in sincere appreciation of your continued support of the DAV and its mission, fulfilling our promises to the men and women who have served.
We appreciate all that you do, you know, we don't, I guess we don't, I don't, I didn't realize that y'all did, did that. So, we really do appreciate that. And I know when I go to the VA hospital with my dad, always am appreciative of the men and women who have served our country that I see while I'm there. And it's, it's always a privilege for me to have the honor to go in there and, and see, and see what our, you know, veterans have done and, and everything, so. Okay, our next item of business will be the recognition of the Wellness Clinic Physician Assistant Jennifer Shupin as the Best Physician Assistant in the Reader's Choice Awards. And we have our County Manager Bryant Morehead, and we also have Jennifer here. So Jennifer, why don't you come up? I'm sure you have something you would like to say after Bryant.
There's nothing more she likes than standing at the podium, you can tell. This is a, a great announcement to get to make. The Mountaineer, as you know, has the best of Haywood awards. And according to the paper, they had more voters this year than ever before. And our own Jennifer Shupin was named Haywood's Best Physician Assistant. And you can tell with the passion and care she serves our county employees and families that people notice, and we're just very fortunate to have her. Jennifer, please say something.
Oh, well, thank you very much for the recognition. It was very humbling. I didn't know there was such a thing for PAs. But anyway, I'm just very thankful for the job, and I certainly enjoy it immensely, and I feel privileged that, it seems like most of county employees, it's just, it is a very family-type atmosphere, so I really couldn't ask for any better job. So, I appreciate it and certainly look forward to doing it, hopefully for years to come.
Okay. Anybody want, would anybody else like to say anything?
Well, I just know that Wellness Clinic has been a tremendous asset to the county, as well as the county employees. And, and the reason it has been is a lot because of Jennifer and the care that she does provide to the patients, and they trust her. I do.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, Jennifer.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I've actually had to use it quite a bit here lately, so, thank you.
Is anybody, I guess Tommy and Mark haven't really been here long enough to?
No, I reckon I've been healthy here lately, hock on wood, but some of these other guys had to come see.
I'll cough on him a couple times.
Well, I know Jennifer, of, of the things that Haywood County does provide for its employees, I can say, just from personal experience, that's probably one of the best, you know, the best services that we're able to do for our employees is the Wellness Clinic. I know Marty, I think, was instrumental in getting that started a few years ago. But, we appreciate Jennifer, she's always, I always know that I can, you know, can confide in her, and she's gonna get me the best care possible and, and help me in any way with my health. And I have a lot of health issues, so that's good that we've got, and I know other employees do too. And I know that's, it's a comfort to know that, that that, that you're there for us and everything, and you always are friendly and helpful, so we appreciate, I appreciate that, and my family does too.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, you can go back to work, I guess, can't you? Just so, the Wellness Clinic is almost like a, is almost like an urgent care for the, for the employees. And it, what it does is it keeps the costs down for our employees that might, would have to go to urgent care or to their daughter. So Jennifer's there from 8:00 to 12:00, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and Friday, and then from 2:00 to 6:00 on Thursdays. So it keeps our healthcare costs down by being able to just have this clinic available for our employees to go to, instead of like going to the urgent care, which is, I think, is like $250 a visit or something like that. It's been a while since I've been at one of those, so, and anyway, it was, it's a, it's been a good, a good benefit for employees, and they all really like it. That's one of the things I hear as a Commissioner, is, is the Wellness Clinic. Okay, our next item of business is a Discussion Adjustment to the Agenda. Does anybody have anything? I don't at this time. Okay. Okay, and then, okay, now, we'll go to our Consent Agenda, and we need to, we have a request to approve the Special Meeting Minutes and Regular Minutes of March 18th. And then, the other item is the Request Approval of a Budget Amendment to Accept an Appropriate Additional Federal E-Rate Funds to, for the Library in the amount of $31,344 for Equipment, Special Program Materials, Computers, and Software. So does any of the Commissioners have any questions on those two items in the Consent Agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Tommy? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous? Okay, that concludes our Consent Agenda. We'll move on to our Regular Agenda, and we have a request to approve a Resolution Appointing a Special Board of Equalization and Review, and we have our Tax Assessor, Judy Hickman. And at our last meeting, we appointed seven members to the E&amp;R Board, as we call it. And today, we have to formally approve a resolution, so go ahead, Judy.
Okay, I'm requesting approval of the Resolution for the Special Board of Equalization and Review, and I'm also requesting the appointment of a Chairman and Vice Chairman for that Board.
Okay. Okay, so of the seven members, we need to appoint a Chair and Vice Chair. And personally, we've had a couple of those people serve, Jimmy Flynn and Evelyn Cooper, I'm sorry, keep, I have, have, have done an excellent job. And I would really like to see Jimmy to be our Chair, and Evelyn is our Vice Chair. But I, you know, I'm open to other suggestions by the Commissioners, 'cause everyone here sat in on the interviews. So what do you, is anybody?
That's, that's, those are the most experienced people on the Board, so.
Yeah.
I'll move that Jimmy Flynn be appointed Chairman of the Board of Equalization and Review.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And if there's no other discussion about Vice Chairman, I'll move that Evelyn Cooper be appointed Vice Chair of the Board of Equalization and Review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And those, Jimmy has got a lot of experience, other, working with the public. He was, he was with the town of Canton for several years, and I can't, I can't remember all the positions he held in the town of Canton. It was a very, it was several positions in, for the town. And then Evelyn Cooper was our Tax Assessor for years and years, and she's also served in the capacity as Chair and Vice Chair. So, okay, go ahead, Judy.
Okay, and I just need approval for the Resolution.
Okay. Do, do we need to read that, or is it just the Resolution that's in the minute, in the packet rather?
Do you want me to read it?
It's, it's in our packet, that's okay. Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the Resolution for the Board of Equalization and Review.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item of business is to request approval of a new Haywood County Library Security Camera Policy and amended Haywood County Public Library Computer Use and Internet Policy. We have our Library Director Kathy Wassler here with us this morning. Welcome.
Good morning. So, the Security Camera Policy is a new policy for the library. I felt that it was important that we have a policy that states to the public why we make use of closed-circuit cameras to document incidents that may occur at the library. These help protect the public, the safety and security of the public, the staff, and the library materials. We do have signs posted outside and inside the library to state that we are using closed-circuit television. We currently have the cameras at the Canton and Waynesville branches, and we are looking into installing them at the Feins Creek Branch also.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Kathy?
No, I think, we discussed this at the Library Board Meeting, and I believe Frank and Bryant have reviewed it as well and have approved it also.
The second is the Computer Use and Internet Policy. We have had this policy in place, but we are making some amendments so that the policy is more closely aligned with the library's maximum fine policy. Currently, if someone has more than $5 in fines or fees, they lose borrowing privileges of library materials. And we'd like to also have that reflected in that they will not be able to use county-owned computers if they have more than $5 in fines or fees that are owed to the library. The other change is that we currently give guest passes to anyone who comes in and requests that, to use a public computer. What we're planning to do is start checking photo IDs if someone comes in to request a pass. This will be compared against our, our database that we have of all our library users. Sometimes people tend to forget that they've had a library card, or they had one when they were younger, they haven't used it in a while. And our current cataloguing system, which is a statewide system, really prefers that a person only have one library card across the state of North Carolina, so it will allow us to be able to, to see if they have a card in another county. And then also, by checking an ID, we'll be able to find out if someone does have more fines or fees than, than what they might have thought. If they pay something toward their fine, we will still issue them a guest pass, especially if they have to look for a job or pay an online bill, that sort of thing. And they still have Wi-Fi access on their personal device that's free.
Great. Do we need to prove these separately or all together, do you think? Yeah, okay.
I think you can do them all together.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Kathy? Seems commonsensical to me, I read through.
We had a lot of discussion about the fines and, and fees, and the, matter of fact, it went on for several minutes, a lot of different opinions as regards to how we should handle it. But the fact of the matter is, I mean, if someone has fines or fees at the library, that they should be paid prior to their use of the computer systems there, because it, it's actually a very busy library, and a lot of activity, and so it prohibits other people from utilizing those computers. And so, we want the people who are actually in compliance and paying and up to date on their fines and fees to have first choice at that.
Okay, that's good. Okay, this, does anybody have any? Okay, at this time, I'll, I'll ask for a motion to approve the new Haywood County Public Library Security Camera Policy and amended Haywood County Public Library Computer Use and Internet Policy.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's unanimous? Okay, our next item of business is to request approval to take possession of a vehicle seized through the DEA Asset Forfeiture Program as the result of a criminal investigation to be utilized for official business in the Sheriff's Office. And we have our Sheriff, instead of our Chief Deputy, we have our Sheriff here this morning.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. What you said is exactly right. What we, what we want to do is request this vehicle to be used for, for undercover work for us. We, we have an undercover vehicle, but it's, it's been used for about three years now, and it's time for us to rotate that one off. And so our plan is to, to actually just basically switch, switch the tags and insurance over to this one, and actually put that one surplus.
Okay, and we don't want to say what it is.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
And we also, to me, if you're, if you're gonna be undercover, you probably want to get a vehicle like this, because maybe that's what they, they use for whatever reasons.
That's exactly right. And that's the reason that the DEA actually recommended this particular vehicle to us, so.
Okay, okay. I don't know, and I don't really want to know what, what kind of vehicle that will be. Okay, does anybody have any questions of the Sheriff? Okay. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve that we take possession of a vehicle seized through the DEA Asset Forfeiture Program and as the result of a criminal investigation to be utilized for official business in the Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Our next item of business will be to, is a request of approval for an amendment to our Haywood County Incentive for Business and Industry Policy. And we have our Program Administrator David Francis here this morning, and we've talked about this in, in our Economic Development Close Sessions.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Seems like spring has played April Fool's on us today. It's a little chilly this morning at 25 degrees. Want to talk to you about an important economic development tool that's come down, that we have been working with for the last year. It's really coming into fruition in 2019. Haywood County Opportunity Zones were created by Federal Legislation in Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017 to stimulate growth in communities across America by providing a tax incentive for private investors to make long-term investments in low-income communities. An area must have a poverty rate of 20% or greater and/or median household income that is less than 80% of the area's median income. So how we got to these Opportunity Zones is the Department of Commerce asked that each counties in the state of North Carolina to submit Opportunity Zones based on those census tracts of lower income, 80% median income. We submitted six different Opportunity Zones, two in Waynesville, two in Canton, and one in Maggie, and one in Clyde. We went through a process of the Department of Commerce, and we had one Opportunity Zone that was chosen. That Opportunity Zone that was chosen was in the Canton area. It starts basically in Hinson Cove and goes through the town of Canton, over into, almost to the Buncombe County line. So it is a large census tract. So it incorporates the town of Canton, has rural areas, and so it has a unique opportunity for investors to invest in. When I'm talking to fellow counterparts across the state, they're talking about most of the investment is going into the urban areas, not into the rural areas. So one of the things that we trying to do is how do we get some people to say, hey, take a look at Haywood County, even though we're a little bit more rural, we have something special to offer here. So, when you do the Opportunity Zones, what, it, it comes to the private investor, is where these Opportunity Zones are really created for. Rather than paying taxes on unrealized capital, capital gains, investors have the option to reinvest those gains into Opportunity Zones by placing the gains in an Opportunity Fund. As long as the funds remain invested, taxation is temporarily deferred. If gains remain invested in Opportunity Zones for 10 years, remain invested in there for 10 years, the capital gain tax is permanently waived. So if a person invests in their unrealized gains, which is a paper, it's on paper, they've not taken that gain out and then cashed it in. They've moved it from one, a sale of an asset and put it into another asset. And what's unique about the Opportunity Zone is sometimes you hear 1031 exchanges, you have to take those gains that you made and that principal that you made and move it in, into, you know, into a new vehicle funding. With this Opportunity Zone is, you can still, you can take your principal back out and use just the gain to go into the Opportunity Fund. So that makes it a little bit more attractive. So if the investor leaves the gain there for, for five years, they get a 5% bump. If they go to seven years, they get a 10% bump. So if an investor had $200,000 to invest, so at the end of the seven years, they get, they, $200,000, they would have $170,000 they would have, they would have to pay taxes on. They leave it in there for 10 years, that's totally tax-free. So that's what makes this unique. So, as I said, Opportunity Zones allow investment in operating businesses, equipment, and real property. The fund must be dedicated to small business investment, where economic development can be structured as a corporation or a partnership. To create an Opportunity Fund, eligible taxpayers may self-certify by filing a simple form with their annual federal income. So we have a new vehicle here to attract industry. So we've had a couple of lookers looking at our Opportunity Zone, and we're, you know, trying to make it more attractive to them where they can see that Haywood County is serious about this. So what we have proposed here is to change the wording, just one little sentence there that says, "To further attract businesses to the designated operating zone, incentives may be extended until 2029." That would match the 10 years of, of the federal legislation. So that, we would be mirroring that. And this gives the Board opportunities that says "may." We don't have, we don't have to do it. You know, these opportunity incentives would come directly to the Board, as we have in the past, a public hearing, and then the Board would vote on those incentives if, if they deem the business, you know, that, that's what they'd like to do. So we'd like to make that, that small change there, to hopefully attract. And one of the things that we think this Opportunity Zone does, is that our strategy is tied with community development goals in order to leverage growth, potential investment in infrastructure, funding sources, and incentives in business and workforce development efforts here in Haywood County. And we think, we hope that this will give us a little bit of a stronger niche where we can, you know, show some companies that here we're trying to work with you and mirror what the federal government is doing. I think it makes sense for us right now. Have any questions, Board?
No, I'd just like to make a comment. I think the federal initiative coming out of Washington is really good. And I think Smoky Mountain News, they had a very informative article on that here a few weeks ago. And for us to go ahead and match the federal initiative, you know, I think it's very appropriate that we do. And we're making a statement that, yes, you know, we are serious and getting on board with that. So, thank you.
This is the opportunity zone. Y'all can see that. It basically is from Highway 1923 from the Haywood County line to Canton. And then it would lie south of that to Kim's Cove Road, Morning Star Road, and to the southwest is Hinson Cove Road. So that's what they approved. And we've actually had some interest.
We've had, yeah.
Had some good interest. So... And this policy will match the federal.
Yeah. As I said, you know, there's so much activity in the urban, you know, Asheville. There's six opportunity zones or five opportunity zones in Asheville. And most of them are in urban area for the Rivers Arts District, the South Slope. They have a lot of activity right in there. But when I talk to some people out east, you know, there's not much in the rural areas. And so I'm hoping this will drive a little bit more interest here as well, too.
So basically, we have our Haywood County Incentive for Business and Industry format, and that allows for a return of tax monies for five years, depending on the percentage set out in the...
Correct.
In our policy. And so what we're doing is adding to that policy that if you have a business and you start your business in the opportunity zone, then you may have the opportunity to get a clawback for up to 10 years, up to 2029. And so that's what we're approving today, and that's the difference in our normal policy.
Correct. And it would just... The 10 years just applies into the opportunity zone.
Right.
Not into any other designated areas.
So if you're outside the opportunity zone, it's still five years. If you're inside the opportunity zone, it could be up to 10 years.
Can be up to 10 years, correct. So it could be, you know, do, you know, how things, you know, articulate through. Could be seven years, eight years, could be up to 10.
We're just trying to drive them to those areas is what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, and one other thing. The incentive will not be larger than what the corporation has paid in. The company has paid in in taxes. That doesn't change.
Right. And that's what they articulate when it goes through.
Yeah, we're not giving them anything. It's just basically they make the investment, they'll give them a little break. Yeah, they'll give them a little break.
You're just extending this five, you know, possibly five more years, the same grid here. So if a company came in, invested $3 million, and had 25 employees, it'd be 65%. So if they paid $100,000 in taxes, they'd get $65,000 back. So it'd still say the same.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time to approve the amendment to the Haywood County Incentive for Business and Industry.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Our fifth item of regular business is to request approval for the county manager to enter into a contract with Henry Schein Dental for the purchase of five dental patient units at the HHSA Dental Office in the amount of $100,219 to be paid from budgeted funds from the Medicaid cost settlement requiring no county money. We have our Public Health Services Director, Patrick Johnson.
Good morning. These five dental patient units, they're often called dental chairs. But we had one dental chair break this year, and the other four chairs were purchased in 2001, so they're 18 years old. We have the money from the cost-based settlement, so it's no county money being used for this... For these purchases. The Henry Schein Dental bid was for $100,000, which was the low bid. The contract does include installation. The dental team reviewed these units, and they're very pleased with them. And they're ready for an upgrade, for sure. Commissioner Rogers has been to our meetings and is very familiar with the dental team productivity. The dental team provides dental care for primarily Medicaid recipients and also private pay on a sliding fee scale. Really, that's all I have on this, and I'm ready to answer your questions on it.
Anyone have any questions for Patrick?
I was just curious. How many patients do you generally see on a monthly basis or...
Well, we see approximately... We make 30 patients, 30 appointments a day, so four days a week. So... And we have a show rate of about 85%. So... Can you help me with the math there, I guess? But they're very, they're very busy. Every now and then, about one day a week, they see over 30 patients a day. They work in extra patients. It's a very busy clinic.
Seems like it's over 100 patients a week.
No, 120, anyway. Something like that. It's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll entertain them. If there's any other questions? At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve for the county manager for right to enter into a contract with Henry Schein Dental for the purchase of five dental patient units for our HHSA Dental Office in the amount of $100,219. And that'll be paid from budgeted funds from the Medicaid cost settlement, and it requires no county money.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Patrick. Okay, our next item of business is to request approval to award a contract to construct two new HVAC units for the law enforcement center to Messer Heating and Air in the amount of $134,450 to be paid... I mean, 450... $134,450 to be paid from budgeted amounts. And we have our Development Facilities Services Director, Chris Boyd, this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm requesting approval of that contract with Messer Heating and Air for the two units at the law enforcement center. Those two units are very large in size. One is a 40-ton unit, one is an 18-ton unit. We've had multiple difficulties with these units over the past several years. While we think of that facility as new, that facility was constructed in 2004, so we've now been in there for 15 years. So we do have some aging equipment on the top of that facility.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Chris?
I've got a question, too. I was looking in this here, and I know they were the lowest bid.
Yes.
However, I was looking at lead betters, and according to lead betters, they gave a one-year labor warranty on the installation. It starts after they do the startup. I didn't see anything mentioned in that on Messer's, on their bid. I know there's about $3,500 difference, but if something were to go wrong, is Messer's going to have to stand behind, or are we going to have to go after them to fix it since it wasn't mentioned?
We have a very good working relationship with Messer. He's replaced several HVAC units for us already this year. We're currently in a situation like that now with a warranty from him on one that we replaced at the Ag Center. So I do believe that there is a warranty with that because we had that conversation verbally with Messer. All of the three provided a one-year warranty. Maybe it's not on that quote, but I certainly did follow up on that with him.
Okay.
That's a good question. Anybody else have anything? Yeah, I know, we talked, too. These units run all the time.
24/7?
Yeah, I mean, they're all the time. There's somebody in that jail.
Just to understand the size of a 40-ton unit. Most normal three-bedroom houses run with an eight-ton unit, you know, in a 2,000 to 2,400 square feet. So a 40-ton unit, you know, this is a 54,000-square-foot facility. So these units are not able to just be purchased. This unit actually has to be constructed. That's the size of them, that no one typically runs this size unless it's one of these large commercial structures.
Chris, is that the same size we've got now?
It is exactly the same size. It's going to be made to fit specifically the ductwork. We will not be replacing ductwork or anything else. So we're not proposing to change the system, just replace that RTU.
You may have said it, Chris, and I may have missed it, but are those the original units that was installed?
They are original units.
So how old are they now?
15 years.
15 years? Now, they're just shot. I mean, the copper and condensers and everything just probably having to be patched and...
They're worn pretty much, you know. Normally, 20 years is the basic life of a commercial HVAC unit. But you're talking about a facility that never closes.
Yeah.
You know, I think the sheriff would be happy to share with you that he never closes the doors to that facility. And so the, you know, the unit never has time to rest. You take this building, we lock it, we close the doors at 6:00, 7:00, probably nobody left here. It has time to rest and equalize without the introduction of outside unconditioned air. That facility constantly has the introduction of outside unconditioned air, so it never shuts off. It never rests.
I know, I know air conditioning, the cooling part of it, they don't even manufacture the gas anymore. I forget what they call that. Like, if you have a... You have to recharge it.
Freon.
Freon, yeah. It's real expensive.
Yeah, there's a new...
Yeah. I had some older units that it was, it was just to get a pound of that, it was real expensive. And so it almost was like, yeah, I finally replaced my office, and I think it had only been... I replaced it last year, and it'd been in there 14 years. So I replaced it in '05, actually.
Freon's very expensive. You know, and it takes a lot of it to operate a 40-ton unit.
So this will have all the new freon?
Absolutely.
Just want to point that out. But so you're going to follow up on Mark's question about the warranty and make sure... Okay. I think that's pretty typical about that. And then I noticed he also had five-years parts, but I bet that's... I bet that's a... What do you call the person that makes it? Manufacture?
Manufacture warranty. Yeah, and they all quoted the same unit. It's a AON 40-ton unit.
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that... And you'll check on those warranties. That we approve to award the contract to construct two new HVAC systems for the law enforcement center to Messer Heating and Air in the amount of $134,450 to be paid from budgeted funds.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Think we can get 15 more years out of these.
I certainly hope so.
Out of the new ones, 15 years.
You know, just so you know, we're going to be replacing others in the coming years, so expect to see that in the budget as well.
Okay. I would think, too, the more... The newer the units, the more efficient in today's...
That's true. Keep in mind, we have 15 units on the top of this facility. We're only replacing two currently.
That's not real good news.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. You know, discussion. All those in favor designate by saying aye. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, our seventh item of business is to request approval of a resolution in opposition of the Catawba Indian Nation Casino in North Carolina. And what this is, we were... Tommy and I were at the Southwest Commission meeting Monday night, and Chief Sneed from the Cherokee Reservation, Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, was there and is concerned with a casino possibly being built in...
Cleveland County.
Cleveland County. And it's in the edge of South Carolina, seems like, too. And do you want to make a comment on that, Tommy? Since you were there also?
Well, the chief addressed all the seven westernmost counties and reiterated the economic impact of the facility in Cherokee right now. And there was a senator that proposed this from South Carolina to go in Cleveland County. He said 33% of their business came from Charlotte this way, and they currently employ... I thought he said Kevin, correct me, but nearly 400 people from Haywood County work there.
I believe so, yeah.
And anyway, he said it was probably going to trim their bottom line by about a third, and they'd have to cut their workforce. And he wasn't very happy with the governor, had backtracked. He'd told him, promised him during the campaign that he wouldn't support something like that, and he's kind of hands-off now. And we've got two senators that have signed on to co-sponsor this bill. Without getting too political, he got a little political, but he was a little upset. And the thing got me about this was he said this would turn the Indian Nation on its head from coast to coast because the Catawba Indian do not own land in North Carolina or they're not a recognized tribe either. So this would be setting precedent from California all the way to the coast. And he said they currently had Cherokee, registered Cherokee Indians living in seven states. And he said if this passed, they could conceivably put a casino in seven more states. And he said likewise other recognized tribes in this country. So if this goes through, he said this would explode the gaming industry. There'd be casinos popping up like mushrooms all over the country. And it's very complicated. He said it was very complicated, the impact of this is... It's very large. So he was requesting that all seven western counties support him and protest of opening up this legislation and thereby opening up to protect his interests and protect the economic impact of workers. But also, you're looking at a nationwide impact as far as opening up gaming all across the country and just blowing the doors open on it. So it is a complicated legislation, a lot of complicated impacts. But he was requesting that we sign along this resolution with all the other seven western counties to protest this move and to vote against allowing that to happen in Cleveland County.
Okay, yeah, I had asked that he send us a sample resolution that we could kind of fill in the blank and tweak. And then I know our staff has worked on that since Monday, or since Wednesday, probably, to get this. David, do you have any comments on it at all? I know David has spoken with Chief Sneed, and we've worked with the Eastern Band on some issues that we have in the county. Probably can't comment on them at this point, but they've been very cooperative in their... In our relationship with them on some matters.
You know, through the years, I've had the opportunity to work with... Michelle Hicks was the prior chief to Sneed on a couple of other issues. And our relationship with the tribe has been growing over the last 10 years. And it really came into focus how important they were to our area over the last two months when we had an issue pop up and how willingness they were to help us, you know, get this issue resolved quickly. And it's, you know, we've been over there several times. And we also started working with them about how the casino has impacted our area as well. Because Haywood County's, you've heard me say, gets pressure from the east from Asheville. And we've gotten pressure from the west with the casino. And they've been willing to listen and work with us as we try to figure out some affordable housing issues. And that's been a very good initial discussions with them, how they progressing and how we're trying to get there to come up with a collaboration and a partnership. Because they, you know, they could have just said, hey, you're in Haywood County, it's not our problem. They recognize the importance of finding affordable housing and workforce housing here in our county as well. So I think, you know, I wasn't at the meeting, but it was important, you know, for us, you know, especially on the economic development side, you know, to recognize the large impact they have had on us. And I know a lot of people that have, you know, benefited from the casino and the tribe being there. The, you know, the Vantage Point, some apartments over there, you know, they have a waiting list for apartments there. You know, the new apartments that are going in over on Plot Creek, they, you know, were looking elsewhere, but they wanted to be on that side of the county to be able to offer housing, you know, for workers over there at the casino. And so the tribe has been very willing and listening to our needs and concerns over the last year and support this resolution from a partnership side of things and also being a good neighbor as well, too.
Okay, thank you, Dave. I knew David had worked, had called Chief Sneed and worked with him on this also. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I think just a comment that I would have is that, you know, this is... This is an issue that we should treat as if this business was located in Haywood County and employed approximately 500 people in Haywood County. Because that's what it does, at least. There are 500 people... There are 500 people in Haywood County that depend on working at the casino. And so, if we were faced with the same issue with, with a company that is located here that employs 500 of our people, would we support this or not? And we probably would support it for the benefit of those county citizens. So, you know, some of these issues are probably not things that our county should be involved in directly, but I think the fact that it does impact our, the employees like it does in our citizens, that we probably should support that. And they have been a really good neighbor to us, the tribe has.
They really have.
Yeah, I'd agree with that comment as well. I mean, they do employ all those people which supplies the jobs for those families. And not only that, I think you mentioned it earlier, but they have been really good to work with us on some other issues that's come up that we thought would be a problem. And they were quick to respond and worked with us, so I have no problem with it.
You know, just to follow up on Kirk's comment, there was a statement made by the chairman of the Swain County Commission. There was 1,000 jobs, I think, total impacted by this in about three or four counties, and he almost likened it to Robin Peter to pay Paul. You're going to take 1,000 jobs away from the western district of North Carolina and move them back down toward the Charlotte area. He still just 1,000 jobs, what he was talking about, but you're taking 1,000 jobs out of western North Carolina and moving them down there. And so, you've got the casino, you've got the gambling, that industry's there. Whatever your personal preference is on gambling is up to you. But the nuts and bolts of it is, it's like Kirk said, it's an economic impact. You've got the jobs. Why take them from here and take them down there? It doesn't make a lot of sense to do that, plus opening up the nationwide issue of casinos popping up all over the country. The Catawba Indians are a South Carolina tribe. They're not, they're not recognized in North Carolina. So, it is a complicated issue, and it's a kind of a head-shaker, really, to see this even come up, but it has, so.
Have any comments, Mark? This is, actually, this is a Senate Bill 790 in the U.S. Senate. It was proposed by Lindsey Graham. And so, we're going to be sending this to Richard, our senators, Richard Burr and Tom Tillis, and the members of the Senate Indian Affairs Committee. And so, and we'll, so, okay. I don't-
I guess, you know, if you want to get into those issues, I mean, it's also co-sponsored by our two senators as well.
Yes.
So, I don't know all the background, but there must be some reason that they support it within the state of North Carolina. But also, I've been around this long enough and involved with our state long enough to know that if something can help the eastern and central part of the state, they're going to do it, and they really don't care what happens to the western part of the state, so.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, it's a long resolution. I'm not going to read all of it, I don't think. It's been in our packets and everything, so. But it really spells out the numbers and how it impacts western North Carolina and Haywood County. So, at this point, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the resolution of, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just one thing to point out, Kevin, is I know they got gambling over there, but they also have a lot of other things that they do. You know, they got restaurants, they got bowling, they got a lot of other things. So, just, just from the point Tommy was making, you know, it's not just all gambling. So, just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, I never go, when I go over there, it's to enjoy the other things. I don't ever, I don't care about the other, you know, the gambling side of it. But it does have a lot of, actually, family-oriented type businesses and activities to do, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So, all those, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to oppose? Okay, that's unanimous, and I appreciate that. Candy, if you would, would you send this to Southwest Commission and ask them to send out to their... They sent a bunch of contacts, to all the contacts they had sent, they'd sent that to, so. I told them I would send it out, because I think we're the first board to be able to do this. I know Graham County's going to be considering it Thursday, I think, or maybe Tuesday, so. Okay. Okay, the eighth item of business is to announce, is an announcement for the Board of Commissioners' work sessions on April 15, 2019, beginning at 3:00 PM, and that'll be before our next meeting. It'll be at 3:00 PM. And I believe that'll be with the schools and the community college, okay? And then, May 6, following the morning meeting, our regular scheduled meeting in the historic courtroom, it'll be at, after that meeting concludes on May the 6th. And I guess that'll be a work session on, we'll probably be moving towards finalization of the budget, I guess, at that point. Okay, so that's just an announcement. It doesn't have to be voted on or anything. Okay. Okay, and then, the next item of business is our appointments, and we have to request approval of appointments to boards and committees, and I'm going to turn this over to our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several appointments to review. The first is for the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. There are three people that have applied. They've been vetted with no conflicts of interest, and they've completed the orientation come recommended from the state ombudsman. They are Maggie Pearson, James Pearson, and Lee Mara Odom. Next is for the Health and Human Services Board. These are reappointments for Sarah Henderson and Dr. Ginger Lang. And then, the next appointment is for the TDA. It's for the 28785/861% Subcommittee, and it is Joey Fusler.
Okay. Okay, do we have any questions for any of those appointments? It's pretty typical. Okay, here and then, I'll entertain a motion that we request approval of these appointments to the boards and committees, and that would be Margaret Pearson, James Pearson, and Lee Mara Odom to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care, and Sarah Henderson and Dr. Ginger Lang for the Health and Human Services Board, and Joey Fusler to the TDA, 2878586TDA1% ZIP Code Subcommittee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to oppose to that? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. And at this point, I'll entertain a motion that we move into closed session for economic development, and that's statute 143-31811A4.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the chamber. Okay, we're back from closed session. Do we have any other business for open session? Here and then, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.